There we go. I look kind of blue.
You do, you look like a snake.
Good evening, everybody. Today is December 14th. It is the monthly meeting of the Planning Board in the Veterans Memorial Building. First thing we'd like to do is do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, great. Thank you. First item on our agenda is Anthology of Millis Dover Road waiver of site plan review request. And that would be presented by Josh Anderson, I believe. Yeah, okay, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. How are we doing?
Good.
Hi.
Does everybody have a copy of the letter that I sent out? I just want to make sure.
Yep.
Yes.
The pressure is my friend.
Yeah, no problem. I'm just getting myself organized and traveling a little bit here. So, my name is Josh Anderson, by the way. Just introducing myself real quick. I'm with the Anthology Senior Living. I'm one of the construction PMs for the Dover Road facility that we're building out there that's slated to be complete in October of 2022. The proposal you have in front of you is for the request for a sales and marketing trailer that we would like to set and operate on the property as construction would proceed. The goal for us, the Anthology Group, is to basically have community reach out in terms of our leasing and sales market operations for any and all residents that may be interested in living in this facility. And by your permission, we would like that start that operation here as early as we can in the first beginning of the new year. As part of the marketing operations, it's essentially a double-wide trailer. It's a mobile trailer, so in an instance, it can be moved at a given presence, fully capable of ADA access, parking accommodations as needed by, you know, the requirements of the city. Typically, we've seen requirements that it needs to be under its own permanent power, which it can accommodate. And I've also included as part of the letter, a logistics plan to kind of route, show the parking and establish routes. Generally speaking, I would say that we, that the cities that we operate in tend to like to see a separation between our sales operation and the construction traffic out there. So, in this proposal, there is plans for a separation fence and a gate setup to make sure that we maintain a safety between potential residents that would like to meet with the Anthology Group and the activities through construction. So, it's quite important that we get some presence here during the construction phase. We always have interested parties that see the building going up, neighbors that looking for information. Typically, this sales operation is staffed, I would say, normal eight to five hours through the course of a five-day week, usually two to three Anthology staff. You know, they're there to answer any and all questions in terms of leasing and timing and, you know, when the building is going to be move-in ready, for the most part. And then they also have all contact information for the rest of the Anthology Group, such as myself, those involved in the construction. So, in the event that there's more information needed, they have all the resources local to them here, local in Millis, to pass on to get to the right parties, so.
All right. So, I actually went up there. I stopped by and you weren't there on a Saturday.
Yeah.
So, I saw your assistant. We had a nice tour. So, basically, this is an already paved area.
Yep.
It's behind the berm, so it's basically screened from the neighborhood. I think the idea of the fence, just to keep people from wandering off into or backing into, you know, the construction site, isn't a bad idea. And there's plenty of room for the trailer there already. You have one just down the way, and it's temporary.
Correct.
So, you know, this whole thing at this point in time is a completely temporary setup that will disappear when the building's finally done. So, I mean, it looks reasonable to me. Any other people on the board have a comment?
Mr. Chair.
What kind of fence are you looking to establish?
Typically, it's the same similar fence that is the, we use for construction, which is anywhere between a six to eight-foot-tall chain link fence. If there's any requests to do some sort of visual screening, that's pretty easy to accommodate or something like that, you know, seen.
That is behind the berm, so it's basically, and it's a construction site, so it's more to keep, you know, somebody from
Wandering.
Wandering onto the construction site.
Okay, great, perfect.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Riley.
Just for point of clarification for myself, as well as people out in the audience. So, the, I see you have noted on this, on your plan, current construction gate access from Dover Road. Would that remain the construction gate and then the other side, which would end up, the entrance that's to the right of where you've projected the trailer to be? Would that be also for construction and would you have that simply for your guests for the sales office?
Yeah, so, we would move, we would remove the section of the gate to the, I'll call it the right side, the east side here, and push it back to that new line, the new gate line, which is in the red. So, that would be the new secondary gate for the property. The main entrance for this property anyway, for the construction, is the front side here, right between that, right as you come on Bridge Street from Dover Road. So, that is the main access for all the construction traffic. I believe requirements of the city is the construction property has to have two entrances for safety and all purposes. So, we would have to maintain a second construction entrance, so I don't believe that we would be able to close off and not have a gate on that far side. So, again, the intent is to still maintain a construction access for the construction crews on that far side, you know, the best that we can, so.
Okay, my point would, yeah, my comment would just be if they could, I know we have to have two, but if they could have the, where on this plan, you've marked it, access from Dover Road versus the one access from Bridge Street. If the one from access from Dover Road could be your primary construction so that your access from Bridge, the entrance from, access from Bridge Street would be the only access for visitors that are going to the sales office.
Sure, I think we can absolutely, yeah, no, absolutely.
To at least try to minimize the sales office traffic.
Yep. Yeah, it becomes a, it essentially becomes a policing operations for the construction team that's out there. You know, in this case, we would, we would put up signage.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you're always, yeah, I'm sure that at some point, you'll have someone trying to, but if you have a sign, say, at the Dover Road access gate that says "Sales Office Entrance,"
Correct.
With the arrow down, that would be.
Correct.
Good, good point. All right, any other comments? Any comments from the audience? All right. I'm seeing trees in the living. Make a motion that we waive site plan approval.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. I would say that the only comment would be that we do want to go with the additional fence that you showed there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that would be part of our approval. All right, motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yep. One question, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Is there any other sort of stamped approval or anything that I need other than just this board to proceed with setting this up, or just want to make sure that I?
Go to Mike and go to sure.
I will send, I prepare memo, which I send to the building inspector, and I will send you a copy.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
All right. Next on the agenda, special permit application with site plan approval, public hearing continued for 808 Main Street McDonald's Restaurant, renovation of existing restaurant. Could you read the, I remember this in it.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 7:40 PM, in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of John Kuchich, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Borla Engineering for McDonald's Real Estate Company, 110 North Carpenter Street, Chicago, Illinois, requesting a special permit under Section 13 Special Permit Conditions, Paragraph C, Site Plan Review of Zoning Bylaw of the Town of Millis, and Section 12Q, Section V, Use Regulations to Reconstruct the Existing McDonald's Restaurant Located at 808 Main Street, Millis, Mass., Assessors Map 24, Parcel 3. A copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the town clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, thank you. So, you guys have already been here once, and I think we sent you back with a couple of items to work through. If you could do me a favor and do the two-minute overview and then run through the items that you ended up going back over.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so, for the record, Eric DeBrul, Borla Engineering, we worked for you in November, went through the full, the full review, got some feedback. Coming out of that meeting, we revised our plans. We produced a waiver request letter, and we've submitted those, so I can kind of walk you briefly through what those changes are.
This is just in case folks didn't see it earlier, if that's else.
All right, so, the bulk of the plan revisions had to do with the parking, I guess what we'll call on the west side of the lot. We modified the space lengths just to make sure they're zoning compliant based on one of the beta peer review comment letters, but again, the width of the drive aisle and the parking spaces, what's there today, maintaining that width is just slightly different configuration. It's notable the board has to, or has the ability through the special approval process to approve angled spaces. That's pointed out in Beta's letter as well, just wanted to point that out. We've added two additional trees on the perimeter to comply with, or closely as we can comply with tree planting requirements. We did ask for a waiver, and I can go through that, on providing internal landscape islands. There were a couple Board of Health comments that we reviewed at the last meeting. We added a perforated pipe so that we could get some infiltration of the roof runoff. We removed an emergency shut-off manhole from the proposed drainage system. We added some inlet protection filter sacks on some downstream man, catch basins, rather, and then we just showed some existing drainage structures off-site. So, I think that was the bulk of the plan revisions. We did submit that waiver request letter. Melissa has that nicely laid out in the draft decision. Both of those have to do with street, with trees, we're short three trees on the frontage, so requesting a waiver. Instead of providing six, we're providing three, with the idea that we just want to maintain proper site distances. And then the second waiver has to do with not providing internal landscape islands and considering the nine trees that we've provided towards that planting requirement. We were before the Board of Health last night, approved with them last night, and hopeful tonight to get a vote from the board. Happy to ask, answer any questions, and thank you.
No, actually, I mean, I obviously copied on it, so I walked through everything. Okay. Any other questions? I think we've been through this before, so. The reason we had to do the, we kept the, had you guys adjust it so that the parking space length did not get changed, because the Town of Millis wants to have 21-foot parking spaces, so we made sure that we complied to that. And the tree waiver is a standard thing that we do, so. Are there any questions from the audience? So, I can close the hearing. Did you have anything, Melissa?
No, they addressed all the comments that we had. Yep.
Good, good. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I read the letter, so. I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great. We can roll right on to, and thank you, we can roll right on to reading the list of waiver requests. So, actually, I'm going to go, one thing I am going to go through in here is in Melissa's letter, she had a couple that she wanted us to go through. The special approved the 60-degree angled spaces. We can vote on that, I think I remember reading. We don't necessarily have to, it could just be part of, could just be part of the approval. What do you guys think? What's the board think on that? I mean, it does, I think we just keep it as part, we don't have to vote on that separately.
Didn't it already go before the zoning board appealed?
Yeah, but it's, it, the length, no, they never changed the length of it, so that stayed the same. It's just that the angled parking isn't standard.
It can be limited to the, to our approval.
Correct.
Yeah, so we can take an official vote and then make it a condition, or just make it a condition?
I think it would just leave the part of the.
Yeah, right now, I have it on page five in the findings.
Correct.
Under adequacy of arrangement for parking and loading spaces. And specifically, I highlighted in blue just to make it stand out.
I think we just leave it as part of the decision, like it is.
Just make it, just take a quick vote and make it official.
Okay, we could do that. No, that's fine, fair enough. All right, you want to do that? I make a motion that we approve the 60-degree angle parking for the McDonald's project.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The waiver for the trees is fine.
Now you have to make a motion?
Yep, yep, okay, so.
Page six, the decision.
Yep. Number five. I was looking for that, looking for it.
Did you put it over there?
Oh, you did. I had it somewhere, sorry. Yes, I had it right here, sorry. All right, so, all right, so the waiver's requested. All right, number one, a waiver of Section 8C2F Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations by law to allow three trees along the street frontage where six trees are required. A donation of $700 a tree will be made to the Town of Millis Tree Fund for the remaining three trees for a total donation of $2,100. I make a motion that we approve that waiver?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. A waiver from Section 8C2 Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations by law to allow the required amount of nine trees to be planted along the perimeter parking area in lieu of providing landscape islands. That would be, yeah, so I make a motion that we approve that.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it passed unanimously. And then, we could vote, we could actually vote on the approval. Is there, you guys have a chance to read through the Melissa's? So, everything?
So, there's two at the end, Rich, two special permit conditions specific to the site that I just highlighted on page nine.
Yep.
The board had discussed, I think the signage, this condition might be repetitive to what the building inspector is going to review anyway, or you can see the condition there. All the signage that's proposed on the plan is consistent with the bylaw, so.
So, it's already covered?
Yes, that might be.
A little redundant?
Overkill. And then, condition number 23 was based on discussion by the board regarding delivery times by the handicap spaces.
Right.
Is where the delivery door is.
Do we want to define that?
Not necessarily. I think that's up to the.
No, I leave that to, leave that, because if we define it and they have a high-traffic time that's not in it, if we, if they have an issue where the traffic's backed up and, you know, there's a complaint and we haven't defined it, then we could do, you know, we could talk to them about it. I mean, my gut instinct is they're not going to want to deliver stuff at a high-traffic time because they won't make money.
Yeah, we made that assumption on Dunkin' Donuts, and that has not worked out well, because there are multiple times when
They come in?
When, well, what happens is that they're in there, they're blocking, and you can't get around, and you have a Dunkin' Donuts employee, which is usually a high school student or college student, standing up in 109, trying to back people up. It's, it's happened multiple times, that I've witnessed it, and.
Good thing I'm not telling them what happens.
Well, which is why I, I understand your point of not wanting to define it by timeframe, but I would like to establish something that is a little more, just shall be to avoid high-traffic times, is there, and I don't know the answer, but I'd like to, can we put a little more control on that?
Sure.
As far as, you know?
You want to put, like, almost like a notice provision, thinking that they have to notify when they're planning?
Oh, no, we don't want to do that.
No, because we don't, no. I just want there to, like I said, I don't know what the answer is, but I know it's been, I've witnessed it multiple times at Dunkin' Donuts, and I've heard complaints about it. Now, because in the past, I don't think it has happened because the drive-through, there was only one lane. Now, with the two lanes in that island, if you have a delivery vehicle comes back here and is parked back here.
But they're not going to, they said they were going to park in front of the handicap. They're going to load and unload in the same spot.
Okay, so if you've, so now you're talking about blocking, people park here, you're blocking these parking spaces.
Correct.
If they're here and they're blocking those spaces, and that's right at the entrance to where you pull in, I, like I said, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I'd like to, I don't know, maybe we just have to wait and see, but.
Well.
It just seems to me that we've narrowed this whole area, so having people try to get around it to, just to get out.
Okay, so here's a different thought. So, what if we put delivery time should be specified to avoid high-traffic times, and can we have it so it could be, you know, under, subject to performance review by, you know, planning board, you know what I mean? So, basically, they put it in, and if, do we have the ability to adjust the times of the deliveries?
I think you do. I think you can specify that, or you can specify, delivery time should be avoid high-traffic times, avoiding, avoiding, I could say something, avoiding congestion or blocking of Main Street or.
Well, what I'm thinking is, you know, just thinking aloud, so why don't we say, okay, we're going to, we'll set it up to avoid high-traffic times, and then it could be, you know, subject to a performance review by the, you know, after the restaurant, give them a chance, and if there's no problems, then whatever. If it is, then we could bring it back to the, we could have them bring them back in and just ask them to adjust the times.
You could even probably just say, subject to further review by the planning board.
We could do that.
Do they even have control over when the deliveries?
Oh, yeah. Guaranteed. I mean, you know, it's, they're franchisee, but I'm sure if they said, hey, listen, you know, the Town of Millis will only allow us to, you know, get the deliveries, the thing with it is we have to be reasonable.
Right.
You know, because they, the trucks, you know, they have a route, and we want to try to be reasonable, you know?
Yeah, we can't, I know we can't say, okay, it has to be between, you know, 11 and 12.
Right.
Because depending upon traffic, depend, and, you know, whether it's my, it's.
Well, I think we could leave it, we could leave it as it is, and we could, like Josh said, we could make it where it's, you know, subject to
Yeah.
Future review by planning board.
I mean, it's open-ended, so it gives us deference.
Right.
Okay, yeah.
If people come in and complain, we could ask you guys to ask McDonald's to adjust their times, and then we, people get them a chance.
I'm good with that, yeah.
All right, so we just want to add.
I just know that's not how we handled it with Dunkin's, and it's gotten better, but there's been some issues.
So, we learn from our past.
Exactly.
We're better now.
That's right, okay.
Did you get that? What if?
22 and 23 are staying.
23, I, 20, the signs, yeah, 22 removed, but 23, if you could add, what did you say, Josh?
Subject to further review by the planning board.
Subject to further review by the planning board. And then that way, we can, if there's a problem, we can ask them to adjust it. Okay. Was there any other items that you guys picked up? All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit for, with site plan approval for the McDonald's at 808 Main Street. Of course, do I have a plan?
Do you have a plan?
Did you change the date on the plan? Is the plan, date changed from the original?
Yeah, it'll be a revision here.
It is in the revision.
Revised through 11/15.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I make a motion that we approve the special permit with site plan approval for the revised plan dated 11/15/2021 for 808 Main Street.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Great, well, thanks for coming back, appreciate it. Okay, next item on the agenda, and we are actually on schedule, moving on. We have a special permit for site plan approval, public hearing, upgrades to the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant for PFAS. And I'll just let everybody get settled.
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December 14th, 2021, at 8:00 PM, in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Town of Millis DPW, requesting a special permit for site plan approval for work associated with the upgrades to the infrastructure of the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant to reduce levels of PFAS for property located at Water Street, Millis, Mass., Assessors Map 52, Lot 9. Copy of the application and site plan is on file with the office of the town clerk and on the Planning Board's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
All right, so, in the fall, in our fall meeting, we actually approved this project to go ahead. Just so people, people don't know what the PFAS is, there is D, the, yeah, people in charge of the water, which is Mass. DEP, raised the, lowered the level of allowable, disallowable contaminant in the water. And so, some of the wells have reached that limit, and the treatment plant would be to take the town water and pull those contaminants out. So, this is something that, you know, we want to make sure we get, you know, this taken care of. And so, we're going to have a presentation by someone from Kleinfeld?
Yeah, for the record, Tyler Bernier, project engineer at Kleinfeld, there. I'll just give you guys a quick background. So, Millis Uh, so Millis got out in front of the PFAS sampling protocol, um, back in May, April, May of 2020. Um, this was quite a bit prior to Mass DEP actually dictating that anybody collect these samples. Um, samples back in that ti, at that time were bordering on the limit of 20, they were on 17, 18. So it was anticipated that there was gonna be a problem here. Um, a August 2020, another round of samples was collected, which were both over the 20, well, at the time, there was no, um, published limit, but they were over the limit that Mass DEP was planning to begin regulating. So in August of 2020, the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant and Wells 1 and 2, which feed into that plant, were immediately taken offline. Um, and then in March of 2021, uh, we assisted the town in applying for a grant with, from Mass DEP uh, to basically carry us through 30% preliminary design of the treatment facility. Um, got their, you know, their comments, their approvals to move forward with the project. And since that time, or since June or July of this year, we've been working to try to quickly get this plant designed and out to bid as quickly as possible so we can get the wells back online. So the plant itself, um, basically, it, it'll be a, a new structure at the existing DPW facility. Um, just because there's no room to expand the existing De Angelis Treatment Plant structure there. Uh, the building will take the place of an existing storage facility that will be demolished and it will be erected essentially in the same footprint. Um, and then we will basically be removing, you know, the outdated and kind of crumbling site features at that property and, and putting in new pavement and, um, just some basic site features, a couple of fire hydrants, necessary water pipes. Um, there will be no drainage structures installed, it'll all just be, well, there'll be country drainage for the, for the surface water, uh, and then the water that falls on the roof of the building will be redirected to an infiltration system out front of, out front of the facility.
All right, great, um, and you, we got a letter back from you guys this afternoon.
Yes.
Which I had a minute to read. And, and Melissa, Melissa sped read that also, um, and, uh, so Melissa, what did you have for, uh, any, uh, any comments on their feedback?
I did, so, um, we provided a peer review letter on the site plan because this project, um, is less than half an acre. It doesn't trigger, you know, full stormwater review from the planning board. Um, it's kind of limited to site plan review, so Beta provided some comments on, on the plan to Kleinfelter and that's what they responded to today. So the responses to comments provided some additional information and that answered, um, a lot of our, the questions that we had. Um, one of the things was, was, was providing some clarification on, there's an overflow, um, pipe that's part of the process and, um, they indicated that this overflow pipe is very limited in, in its use. Um, it will be discharging maybe not even once a year. Um, so that addressed, um, kind of our comments in regard to continuous flow potential, um, from that point.
Just to clarify that, pipe will, will, should never actually overflow. Even during a normal backwash process, that pipe should never achieve, should never overflow, unless some of the instrumentation has a catastrophic failure and it's just to prevent that emergency situation from backing up into the facility. But if the facility is operating as designed, that should never occur.
That makes sense. Um, so again, Beta was just reviewing the site plan, not the actual process of the facility. So we were just looking, um, at the site plan and, and how that, the, the effect, um, that might, might have there. Um, we had some questions about cover and stabilization of, of areas. Um, it was indicated that those are called out in the construction documents, meaning specifications and whatnot, um, rather than the site plan, which is fine. And, um, there were some edits that they made to, to the plan. So there's a portion of the driveway, it's existing, um, gravel or dirt roadway that kind of.
It's hard to differentiate up there because the pavement's so old that it's kind of deteriorated into dirt. But, yeah, the section on the, on the, um, east side of the building is, is more of a dirt driveway.
Yeah, so there, so, um, paving of this area is an improvement and the infiltration of the rooftop is an improvement, um, to the existing condition. Uh, and they added, um, added some transitional, uh, stone area so that the new pavement isn't causing any erosion issues to the old. Um, there is an area that's, you know, there's some slopes on the site, um, that kind of go towards wetlands that we had commented on. Um, it's a case that if the DPW is comfortable with the plans and the stabilization measures that are being proposed, then we would defer to, um, DPW. Um, it's gonna be their project and their site to continue to maintain, um, going forward. And if they're comfortable, um, you know, with what's proposed and what they can maintain, um, then we are.
And this site is actually uphill of the DPW project that they just did. So basically, everything's gonna go down the hill into the manholes and, and, uh, we've got infiltration all set up down there, so basically, it's all gonna end up in the same, in the same, uh, to be treated. So, should be pretty well contained.
I think that was, that was the, so we had some comments, so they are providing a long-term O and M plan.
Yeah.
Um, for continued, continued maintenance.
Right, um, does, I mean, that was pretty much it. Does anyone else on the board have anything? And this is a pretty straightforward, um, it's on an existing site, they already have a, a structure there. Um, they're gonna put in a new, you know, they're gonna put a new gadget in to replace the old gadget, um, so I.
Is that a technical term?
That is a technical term. Very expensive gadget. Very expensive gadget.
I have one quick question.
Yep, go ahead.
Do we, uh, do we have any sense of the noise level, is it a significant amount of noise?
No, there, there, noise level, there won't be any increase in noise level. Um, there's no, there's no equipment in the facility that actively makes noise. There are well pumps located down in the wellhouses that would push the water through the facility, um, but those are already there and we're upgrading them and replacing them, but they won't be any louder than they are now.
And that is, that is right next to the DPW garage over here, right, so it's, but that's a good question, so. All right, um.
Actually, um, Mr. Chair, um, before we proceed, I did just wanna make one comment. Um, as was stated in the beginning of the presentation, Millis did jump out ahead of most towns and that is as a result of the diligence of Mr. McKay, the head of our DPW. Um, and because of that, he was able to obtain, um, some very lucrative grants from the state to cover a, you know, a good portion of this expense. And so I would just like to make sure that, um, people are aware of that and of the diligence and all of the hard work that Mr. McKay has done on behalf of the town and just personally from my own tax bill, say thank you for, once again, for all of your hard work and all of the, uh, everything that you do for trying to keep the town, keep our water clean and safe and getting what money you can from the state to do it for us.
And to jump on top of that also, um, I do want to also thank the DPW themselves because on the project, they actually took on a bunch of the work, um, down there. They did a lot of the site work down there, um, almost all the site work, um, minus, you know, underground structures. And they put the bollards in to save the town money, they did a lot of work around the landscaping around, so the DPW did do a lot of work that they took on themselves, which saved the town a bunch of money. And, uh, that project is almost completed and has turned out really well and was on budget. So that's a, you know, yeah, you know, thanks to them and all their hard work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, does anyone else in the audience have any comments about, uh, this project? All right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, we can go ahead and vote on this, right? No, I'm just making sure there wasn't anything else that we needed to. Yes, we can, yeah, just making sure. Um, all right, um, I make a motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, special permit.
Site plan approval.
For the upgrades to the De Angelis Water Treatment Plant.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
That must be yours, cause I wrote on mine.
Oh, that's yours.
Oh, okay.
All right, um, the next item on the agenda is the Acorn Place Senior Residential Community Development, uh, field change request for a gravel fire lane. And as I see people file in, we do have a sign-in sheet for you, uh, if you come in, if you could.
Should I proceed or should I wait, Mr. Chair?
Um, why don't we wait a few minutes, that's fine.
All righty.
We can have a little break. Sure. All right, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 9th, 2021.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
I'd say aye, okay. Um, do we have a meeting, should we schedule our?
Right. Yep, I'm still, there you go.
Yes, but just having read the minutes, you know exactly what.
And it sounds like I missed one.
We have one on January scheduled for January 11th, so we just need to schedule for February.
Okey-dokey.
Oh, these are the revised plans?
What did I do, what did I do? All right, so we're looking at the first of the eight?
Yeah, the eight.
I'm gonna do the eight.
You don't want it to be?
No, I said, I think we should do the eight.
Yeah.
Want to do the eight?
February 8th?
February 8th.
All right, Josh, that could be.
Yes.
All right. Yeah. Dan, do you want a piece of bucklava? Sure, it's homemade.
No, thanks.
All right.
All right, so, oh, and actually, we don't need you, Melissa, do we? Not that we don't enjoy your company, but I'm sure your children would like to see you. So why don't we, why don't we let you go?
Are you good for the fire lane?
Uh, oh, actually, I guess you're.
Yeah.
Sorry. You wanna go?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Please, take it.
January 11th still works for everybody, right? Josh, did January 11th?
Yeah, that's right, thank you.
Are you waiting, I will send.
Thank you.
Melissa, were you able to stretch the taking that many times? Was that really a turn?
Yeah, we see that. You're going on vacation, when do you need a pass?
Uh, Ellen, here.
I mean, it'll, it'll be quick.
Thank you.
Me too. No, I think you can do that. Yeah, no, it would be good to get it done.
Yeah, if that's acceptable, I'll be doing it to the office Monday and Friday and then.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah, okay.
We just have to wait for Nicole to get back?
Yep.
What's the extra desk, desk piece for?
They just rearranged the whole.
Oh, really?
For training and then it was left aside.
Oh, funny.
Okey-dokey, um, all right, so before we start this, so, sorry, before we start this, um, this hearing, so.
It's not a hearing.
Uh, sorry, this informal discussion, so, just like last time, to be clear, we're going to be discussing the fire road, okay? So, I, that's really all we're here to talk about, um, so go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dan Merrick and with Legacy Engineering. Uh, following up on the last discussion we had about Acorn Place, we've gone and prepared some information on a modification request for the fire lane. Uh, originally, it was planned to be a reinforced turf, um, but what we'd like to do is make it a gravel, which is essentially the current condition. So I've gone out and looked at it, the road's already been prepped, um, it has a base course on it, a processed gravel that's at least eight inches thick. I know from the prior owner that there's more gravel below that, so there's ample gravel subbase. What I've proposed is that we top it with a three-quarter processed gravel surface, get the final pitch, compact it, and then that'll be the finished product. Um, Beta generated some comments, so I put this little plan together just to show that the, the fire lane has not changed. This was the original design. The grades are proposed to follow the contours of the land, which is a gentle slope downhill towards Acorn Street. It's like 1%, in some places 2%, very moderate. We have a 20-foot wide fire lane that has the existing subbase and we're gonna add to it the, uh, three inches of top course gravel. And then Beta had a question about surface runoff, suggested maybe a swale along the side. We don't really wanna do that, I provided a picture. When we cleared the site, we were very careful to clear this area so that we didn't take out trees that we didn't need to take out for the fire lane, for the benefit of our two single-family residential neighbors here. So I don't, I don't really wanna remove any more trees out there, there's a lot of nice trees along the sides of that. So what I'm proposing instead is to basically take the shoulders of the fire lane and have it be crushstone instead of processed gravel, which basically give a, a stouter area for runoff to run down. Um, this has been in place for well over a year, as hard as a rock out there. There's no evidence of erosion along there, so I'm not worried about runoff. Everything just kind of, kind of slowly slopes out towards Acorn Street and then there's a, there's a swale along the gutter of Acorn Street that runs all the way down. So none of the runoff gets into the road. That's it, so we are here to request a minor modification to allow this change for the fire lane. Uh, it's in good condition right now, uh, they're just, they're building this building here. So, you know, there's some work product in this area, but that's gonna go away soon. Once that goes away, basically, the gravel, the fire lanes to subgrade all the way up through here and fully traversable through here, but once they finish this up, they'll come in here, they'll clean out any unsuitables in here, put in more subbase, and then top the whole thing.
So basically, you're gonna put like, build a like crush around that you'll put in and then contact?
Yeah, three-quarter process crusher.
And that will be, cause one of the concerns they had, that that would be plowable, so that that was.
Yeah, it's plowable, yes.
Cause that was one of the concerns that they brought up. Um, and I assume in the previous, so that the mouth of that would have to be. And I assume in the previous, so that the mouth of that would have to be, can be kept clear, meaning inside your development?
Here, yeah.
Yes.
So, basically, an intent is that any emergency vehicles would be driving over the sidewalk there. So, yeah, this will all have to be kept clear. So, we did, Beta did request that we revise the site O and M plan, which we did do, and we submitted. We added a provision in there for the fire lane maintenance. There's already provision in there for snow removal for the entire property. So, what we did was we clarified that the fire line, the fire lane has to be maintained open and clear at all times for the fire department to use. The gate's there for them. They have a key. That's not, that's not an issue. And that snow be removed, and that, you know, if at any point the surface of the fire lane becomes puddled or soft, that it be regraded and recompacted. So, that's, you know, an obligation of the site to maintain that.
All right, so those were your comments, and so that was pretty much...
Right, those were our comments, was to add the, you know, details. We had something specific when they go back to perform maintenance and whatnot, that we can always go back to that detail and that it's provided in that particular, to that standard, you know, when they construct it. And to update the O and M were our comments on the...
And if I remember reading correctly, they used that as the hall road, so that basically all the ten mills went up and down to that?
Early on in the process, they were bringing fill in. When the front village was under construction, they were bringing fill in to the rear village here through this. So, this has seen a lot of traffic already, and it's not, it's not rutted. It's, like I say, it's hard as a rock.
Anyone in the board have any comments?
Um, I just have one quick comment. So, there's a gate. Where is the gate located? The gate's on Acorn Street.
Yeah.
Okay, so for that to be plowed, I know the fire department has a key to that gate to allow access for fire, for emergency vehicles, will...
Yes, the maintenance company who handles the plowing will have to be given a key to the gate, so that they can open it, plow it, and then close it.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to put that on the record, so everybody would know that it won't be plowed from the inside just up to the gate. The gate will be...
Yeah, we're not going to leave a pile at the gate, yeah.
That's it, thanks.
All right, anyone in the audience have any specific comment on the play? If you could just go up and identify yourself, please.
Come here.
Take it there or the other mic.
I'm Roger Hughes, Acorn Four. I'm here to comment on the engineering. We thank you very much for the action that's been taken to date. We have some issues. One is the lock. If you have a lock, then you have a key, then you have limited access. I want to sound the alarm that that gate should be accessible twenty-four-seven. If you bring in a fire truck into the main entrance of the street in Acorn, you have blocked all exits from that community. If there's a structural fire in the community, you cannot escape except to use that road. And if there's a lock, you can say, well, somebody will have the key, the fire department will come. That may well be the case, and it may not. I'll warn you about that. Now, on the road itself, I've read through all the proposals for the road, and I think he's done a nice job. I would think that we should be a sealer on top of that road. I don't know what that would entail to add that, but I think that would improve the road significantly. I cannot impress you enough that this road should be open at all times for exit in all situations for emergency. We hope that when this road finally gets open, and I think it's unfortunate it wasn't open when the development started, and we're almost at the end of the development, and we're in the transition of the HOA now, when that occurs, I'm sure there'll be many more meetings. I'll be here probably several times in the future, so we hope to get to know you closer. But, that's our suggestion. We just don't want to see an increased cost of further development or paving of the road. And a sealer on top of it would hold the gravel in place. And, but again, I emphasize that that road's got to be open at all times to prevent a disaster from happening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, so, I think I'm good with the way this is set up right now.
Just vote to approve the...
Yeah, I say we make, we vote, so I make a motion to approve the field change.
Request for gravel fire lane.
Right, for gravel fire lane dated December fourth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's fine, you can have a question, but, yeah.
This is the first for me. Oh, I need my glasses. So, this was actually written by my husband.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, my name is Joanne Wise, twenty, Acorn Place.
Thank you.
This was written by my husband, who has had a cold for a little while, so he felt he shouldn't come. So, this is what he wrote. Oh, it's hard to talk in this thing, isn't it, especially because I was a little late? "Thank you. I appreciate the efficiency of this board. You have been crystal clear regarding items under your purview, so I hope my questions are both clear and appropriate." Legacy Engineering stated in communication dated December fourteenth of this year, and this is in regards to the fire lane, that they noted that the fire lane has been in place for well over a year, and there was no erosion. Admittedly, this is not an area of expertise for me. My limited understanding of measuring erosion is that very specific scientific procedures are followed. Would you please enlighten us as to the specific procedures that Legacy Engineering employed? Also, I would appreciate the data that was given to you that supports that statement. Again, I'm no expert, but can someone assure us that no erosion will take place in the future? It'd be nice, I guess.
Okay.
Do I have to stand up here?
No, you're good. So, I'll let Dan answer that question.
Yeah, there's no great scientific mystery here. Erosion is when runoff washes dirt away. It's very obvious to the eye. I don't see any evidence of any significant erosion on that fire road.
And then, just to follow up on the gentleman's question earlier. So, if you put crusher run, which is a product that they put on the top of gravel roads, and they compact it, that tends to be a decent wearable surface, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so, when I grew up, we had a crusher run driveway for thirty-five years, and it was in good shape. So, it is a good point. That material is put in and compacted as a good service. And also, we were, our consultant was savvy enough to make sure that that's written into the decision that they own maintaining it. So, I think that part of the question has been answered on that. So, I think the road itself will be in good shape, so. All right, well, we approve that change to the fire road. You can make another comment if you'd like. Sure, please, go ahead.
Paul Newman, fourteen, Acorn. We just want to make sure as this transition is going on to the HOA, to the people here, that what's designed here is not going to change where five years down the line, we're going to have to pay it.
No, that's fair enough. We have a consulting engineer, and so what happens is they build it. Our engineer, which they, so the developer pays for our consulting engineer, because we don't have a town engineer. They go and they look at it, and they see if there's any issues. Obviously, like, we did discover that there was an issue with the drainage, which was brought up by a resident. And our engineer looked at it, and they agreed, and they brought it back to the developer, and they agreed that they're going to tweak something, so that's how our process works. Nothing's perfect, but our goal is to make sure that your interests are protected and the town's interests are protected. And that's how we do it.
Now, he also spoke about the integrity of the road. It was hard, and it was in good shape. It doesn't quite explain why last winter, a truck got stopped there and had to be hauled out with a crane.
Yeah, I can't answer that, I'm sorry.
So, I think that's part of our concerns about erosion and other things, in that it wasn't stable last winter. So, moving forward, just making sure that it is stable.
That's a fair question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okey-dokey. All right, well, that being said, we're going to move on to our next item.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Did you have something?
No, I didn't know if you wanted to stand, but it was...
Okay, all right, the next item on the agenda is, oh, and sorry. If you guys are going to leave, if you could do us a favor, which is fine, just if you could just go out, and just, we have to continue our meeting. So, if you could just file out, we'll wait a minute. Great, thank you, appreciate it.
See ya. You good now, Mitch?
You're all right, thank you.
You may want to run out with Dan.
All right. All right. All right, see you. So, we'll expect pictures from the kids from Christmas. Next time you come back, Christmas.
Bye, Jim. Merry Christmas. Want another piece?
So, we're just going to take a two-minute, or one-minute break while everyone files out.
Good night, Merry Christmas.
Bye, guys.
Yeah. Is it that TV, or is it the camera?
Okay, all right, I think that's good enough. All right, next item on the agenda is Planning Board Member Attendance Discussion. All right, so, we, in the past meeting or two, we've had an issue where we've had members who have been unable to be here because of illness, and we had some members who were unable to be here because of family commitments. And we have a member that is not being, is not, has not been attending the meetings. So, what I want to do is I'm going to ask the board to approve us sending a letter to him explaining the...
To whom? You've named three people, the three circumstances.
So, I would, thank you for correcting me on that. For the person who has consistently not showed up since June, to express the concern and need for them to attend the meetings, so that we will have a full contingent minus, you know, people who have to be out for specific reasons periodically, and that his attendance is, would be necessary and required as a planning board member. So, I would like to send a letter stating that, so. Any comments from the board?
The letter itself, is this a draft that you would just circulate to us, and then we could...
Sure.
Comment?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's, you know, we really would encourage a planning board member, because they're elected to come and participate, and, because that's all we can really do. We can ask them to attend the meetings for what the people elected him to do.
I think that's important, that that be point, that that be put in, that this is, while it's a volunteer position, they have sought not just to be appointed, they've sought the election from the residents of this town, and that therefore there is a responsibility to meet, you know, the obligations that the residents have, you know, that the residents expect.
And the other thing is, we had a, we actually had a project that had to wait a month because we didn't have enough members. So, that put somebody who was interested in opening a business in Millis a month behind, which, you know, isn't something that, if you're trying to open a business, is a good thing.
Also puts a very poor light on this board, as well as the town as a whole. If, you know, you have, obviously, people get sick, certain things happen, but to have a situation where we have to have a quorum, and we know there's automatically one person that's not going to be here. So, that really puts our board at a distinct disadvantage.
Correct.
And therefore, extends that disadvantage to anybody that's trying to do business with the town.
All right, so, I think the idea on that is we'll write something up, send it to all you guys, and then we'll send it off to the member that has decided not to attend.
Okay.
The next question, next item was the responsibilities and expectations of planning board members. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped right over that. I didn't have my glasses on. I'm sorry, let's go back.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Other business, Economic Development Committee update for complete streets.
Just wanted to give you all an update on two items. There's one, the complete streets policy, which is being pushed by multiple departments, agencies within the state. And the Mass DOT has made it a priority that we, that a town that is looking for certain funding have a complete streets policy. For a short definition, it's basically stating that any, it's, that the town will develop a policy in which any development, whether it's commercial, residential, if the town is doing something, is going to incorporate certain procedures, certain aspects, that will hopefully, over time, provide a more, greater continuity from one section to another for all forms of transportation, not just motor vehicles, whether it's bicycles, whether it's pedestrian transportation, electric cars, all of that. So, I had actually hoped to be presenting you with the final policy, but last Thursday, we, at our meeting, we had a last-minute, member at last minute couldn't attend due to illness, so we didn't have a quorum, so we didn't meet. And with the holidays, we're not going to meet again until January. So, we will be, have, we will, it's not actually going to be the final policy. In effect, what's the Economic Development Committee will be passing is pretty much the, and then asking the Board of Selectmen to approve, is the commitment to establish the policy. And with that, again, we will have access to funding. There is the Complete Streets Funding Program, which provides all sorts of different grant avenues that will open Millis up to being eligible for. The other thing I wanted to update you on is that the Department of Housing and Community Development is drafting guidelines that actually should be out this week, hopefully, as part of the Governor's two thousand twenty-one Economic Development Bill. Not sure how zoning changes get involved into an economic development bill, but that's why I'm not in politics. There is a new proposed Section three A of the Zoning Act, which will require all one hundred and seventy-five MBTA communities to have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides at least one district of reasonable size, of course, reasonable size is not defined, in which multifamily housing is permitted by right. Currently, we, our zoning has, allows for multifamily dwellings by special permit in the RV, the RVC, and the RV two districts. So, we will be required, even though we don't get benefit from the MBTA, we are an MBTA community, and lovingly, we pay into it, but we get nothing out of it. So, this, the new zoning act will require that, as I said, at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted by right, with the district meeting the following criteria. Minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. No age restrictions, and suitable for families with children. Now, there's also the not more than one half-mile from a commuter rail station. from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, but that doesn't apply to us. We don't, as I said, Millis doesn't get any of those benefits from the MBTA. In January, there will be a, the Mass Municipal Association is having a workshop to come up with how we, how the towns can be compliant with that, other than just stating, okay, we're going to pick this section.
Go on this area.
Whether it can be done by an, a, whether we just change a certain district, but that will be something that the planning board will need to be looking into making, presenting this, you know, most likely for spring town meeting.
Well, technically, also, a 40, we already, the 40B can go in, they can go in, and they already have that. So, I mean, it's, this is, this is, I know, this is specific to the MBTA, and we have to pick an area. But right now, if a 40B goes in, they can increase the density.
Yes, but this, this is for multifamily dwellings that, that are not necessarily 40B.
Correct. Yeah.
So this would be for any development.
Are we certain, 100% certain that this does apply, since we do not have a commuter rail or any other?
We are, we are actually, yes, we are category three.
Yeah, I looked at that.
Yes. We do, Millis does pay into annually, has to pay a fee to the MBTA.
Because they consider Norfolk.
They could, yes. We're within so much, there's a distance to the Norfolk train station, even though we don't even get a once-a-day bus route.
Right.
That's something that the town has tried to get out of, but the state has said no. I know multiple versions of the Board of Selectmen have met with our reps and they're like, yeah, good luck.
Does the ride serve Millis?
No. The Economic Development Committee actually just sent out a survey via email to see if there is any interest in, is trying to establish some sort of bus route. If there's enough interest, we would then try to work with, you know, a neighboring town, possibly. One of the things we're thinking of is working with Medway, because they have a bus route that I believe goes to Norfolk, to Norfolk Commuter Rail. So maybe trying to establish some location on, like, we're thinking Village Street or something, where there could be commuter parking to get that bus to Norfolk. I mean, they've asked, the, the survey itself has asked for, you know, would you utilize a bus that took you into Boston? Would you utilize a bus that took, that you could get to the commuter rail? Because the Norfolk Commuter doesn't have that great a parking. And, you know, would you utilize a bus that was simply a local bus route? You know, just to get people, like, you know, older people to the, here, to the senior center, or to the supermarket, CBS, to that plaza. You know, not exactly sure how we'll do it, but before we start looking into anything, we want to see, want to see if it's, if there's enough interest in the community. The senior center has a van where they do transport certain members here, I believe. And then I'm, I think they will take certain members from here to Roach Brothers and back. I'm not exactly sure how that, but that's, it's a small van. It's a very limited number, and it's only for members from the senior center. I don't, I'm not sure how that works. But yeah, so we're trying to see what sort of interest there is, and then go from there. But we will, because we're going to have to look at this, making some sort of changes, we want to wait, we had discussed last month, two months ago, this board talked about maybe extending the MCEOD. We did extend it west. Do we want to extend it east, especially to include the Inn and Hope? We've been, the Economic Development Committee's been in touch with Michael Chase, who is one of the son, one of the two brothers' sons. He kind of oversees everything. He is very interested in sitting down and talking with the town about other, you know, potential options, zoning, you know, trying to do, encourage, you know, help them do something over there. What can the town do? The zoning is an absolute mess. We have, you know, do we want to do the overlay? Do we want to, you know? So hopefully, I think what we're going to try to do is have a virtual meeting with Mr. Chase. And he's not available to meet with us in person until March anymore, because I don't, they're down south somewhere, right?
I think so, yeah.
But at least start, like, try to have an initial meeting, hopefully in January, a virtual meeting, give everybody some ideas, you know, open communication.
Then we'll circle back to the thing that you originally started. I'm just saying, that's, that's going to, that's the key point in that is we're.
Well, yes. So we're, we're not going to think about the overlay right now, because we've got to see how this, how this changed to Section 3A, and hopefully, all of this, and with Mr. Chase, I suspect will be a lot of work for this for 2022. But I just wanted to let everybody know what's going on.
And our water and sewage issues play into this as well.
Yeah.
Yep. So. All right. Well, good. Thank you for that update. Appreciate it.
Don't skip over me anymore.
I know. Well, it's because I didn't have my glasses on. All right. Now that I have my glasses on. Responsibilities and expectations of planning board members documentation vote. So we sent this back to Town Council. They made a couple of tweaks. You guys get the final version of this. I read through it. I think everything looked good. Unless there's any comments, I make a motion that we approve the, or make this part, actually, I don't have to approve it. We can vote on it.
We adopt.
We adopt the responsibilities and requirements of the planning board adopted December 14th, 2021. Motion is made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Great. Okey dokey. Did not get an update this month from the, on what was happening in the town, from Bob. However, let's see, what did we do? I drove around. So the, the project in Causeway Street is going along. They actually, they dug up and put in the water main, and they roughed out the road. It was down there. And then the one over off of Ridge, they, they've done some site work, but they really haven't done much since they cleared and created the roads. I was down there, looked at that. It was over Bridge Street, and that's actually going along rather well. They've actually, they're up to the second floor, and if you haven't been over there.
Growing.
They're cranking on that thing. So that's, that's good news for the town, because that'll be, if that's completed next October, that would be a definite plus, because that will be some additional taxable revenue to help offset the costs of the residents. And what else? I think, DPW building is almost complete. The staff building is done. They have occupancy. And the building, the garage is, I think they're going to get the occupancy in the next couple of days. They're waiting for the gas, the gas service to be connected. Paving is, the base coat of paving's all down, and it's ready for winter. They're ready to go. And then they have demolition to do inside the old building that has to be done before the end of the year, or there'll be a tax liability. So they're working on doing that demo down there. So.
The drain on Dover Road is clear.
And the drain on Dover, well, we actually, we, I did talk to Beta. So on that one, we actually reached out to the developer and said he can pull the silt sock out of that. And they paved the driveway, so it looks, I mean, it looks like it's firmed up. So that's a, that's another success for the planning board and our consulting engineer that we stopped the massive water runoff going down. But it was just because the stuff wasn't put together. That's all. So. All right. Has anyone have anything else? No? All right. Well, I wish everyone a happy holidays from myself and my family.
You too.
You as well.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good night, everybody.